I guess not with everybody.
I'd like to open the public hearing with regards to the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. At this time of last, let's maybe to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, Green County, twenty twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. Notice hereby given that there will be a public hearing on the submission of a Green County Community Development Block Grant, CDVG application to the New York State Office of Homes and Community Reunited OCR for grant of funds to implement a micro enterprise assistance program. Green County wishes to obtain the views of residents, public agencies, and other interested parties regarding community needs prior to submission of a micro enterprise assistance program application. Green County anticipates one or more applications that utilize CDVG funds administered by the New York State Office of Homes and Community Reunited OCR. The CDVG program requires that the county conduct the public hearing in advance of the approval of applications and residents are encouraged to submit comments and suggestions on the utilization of CDVG eligible program funds. Comments and suggestions may be directed via email to jhannas@greencountyny.gov or via email to Green County Planning and Economic Development, Suite 419, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414. The year of this will be is handicapped, so the public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six fifteen. Yeah, in the Green County Office Building, Fourth Floor Legislative Chamber, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons interested in the subject matter thereof will be heard concerning the same.
Thanks for coming, Mike, to the Williams Yard.
Thank you.
All right, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. And I would just ask if you wish to speak, state your name for the record, and with that, we'll begin the hearing. For anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. We have James Hannes here with us tonight, if there are any questions. And again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding? Sir, time, anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding? There are no one? That hearing closed? This six twenty? The second public hearing. Let's open this public hearing with regards to the two thousand twenty-four New York State CDVG program. At this time of last, hand me to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, Green County, twenty twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program. Notice hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Green County's Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, to obtain views of residents, public agencies, and other interested parties on the community development needs of Green County and to discuss potential applications from the county for eligible CDVG twenty twenty-four program funding activities, including consolidated funding applications and open round economic development and micro enterprise budgets. Green County anticipates one or more applications that utilize CDVG funds administered by the New York State Office of Homes and Community Reunited OCR. CDVG program requires that the county conduct the public hearing in advance of the approval of applications and residents are encouraged to submit comments and suggestions on the utilization of CDVG eligible program funds. Comments and suggestions may be directed via email to jhannas@greencountyny.gov or via email to Green County Planning and Economic Development, Suite 419, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six twenty P M in the Green County Office Building, Fourth Floor Legislative Chambers, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons interested in such a matter thereof will be heard concerning the same.
Purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to the two thousand twenty-four New York State CDVG program, and I would just ask if you wish to speak, state your name for the record, and with that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-four New York State CDVG program? And is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-four CDVG, New York State CDVG program? Everybody's put down the spot now. Finally, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the New York State, two thousand twenty-four New York State CDVG program? No one, I will declare that hearing closed. And with that, about two minutes. Six point five, the advertised times for the last public hearing. What's going cooking?
Andrew, what's? Andrew's cooking.
Andrew, yeah? I hope she's not a cooker.
As reported, you don't.
She's not listening either.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing with regards to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four, and at this time, I'll ask hand me to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing on request for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four. Notice is hereby given that one or more requests for inclusion of predominantly viable agricultural lands have been filed with the Green County Legislature and refer to the Green County Agricultural Farmland Protection Board pursuant to Section three oh three B of Article twenty-five A A of New York State Agriculture Markets Law. And the public hearing will be held by the County Legislature of Green County, State of New York, and the Legislative Committee of the Fourth Floor County Office Building, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, on seventeenth day of January, twenty twenty-four at six twenty-five P M. To consider the reported recommendations of the Green County Agricultural Farmland Protection Board to add the following parcels totaling twelve point two eight acres to Green County Agricultural District Number one twenty-four. Owner: Green County Soil and Water, address four twenty-one, County Route fifty-six, Town Village Wyndham, parcel number ninety-seven point zero zero dash three dash three seven, acreage twelve point two eight. Agricultural District one twenty, one twenty-four currently encompass, sorry, encompasses eight hundred and thirty-nine parcels of approximately forty-two thousand one eighty point six-three acres within the Green County towns of Athens, Ashland, Carroll, Catskill, Kupsoke, Durham, Greenville, Calcutta, Hunter, Jewett, Prescott, Lexington, Baltimore, and Wyndham, and the villages of Athens, Catskill, Kupsoke, Hunter, and Tansville, entire County of Green, known as Agricultural District Number one twenty-four. A description and map of the district and proposed additions and recommendations of the Green County Agricultural Farmland Protection Board may be examined in the Office of the Clerk of the Green County Legislature during their business hours. All parties and interested citizens will be heard by the County Legislature at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mary. Purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four, I would just ask that you raise your hand to be recognized, and when we stand, please state your name for the record. With that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four? And we do have Joel DeBois here, Joel, you have a question or pause?
No, I just want to introduce myself, Joel DeBois, I know most of the folks here on the legislature, Executive Director of Green County Soil and Water. The parcel that's on the agenda for consideration tonight is owned by Green County Soil and Water. We've been operating a plant material nursery on the parcel for about fifteen years. We use the plant material we raise there to revegetate river restoration projects and stream buffer enhancement projects, as well as newly rolled out agricultural environmental management program that just started with the new year. So, I just wanted to make sure I was here in case anyone had any questions about what we do there or, or anything else.
Joel, and I want to thank you, I know you brought this application through last year, we kind of welcomed, denied it last year, and we're back and asked you to reach out to the neighbors and come to some agreements if possible, and you absolutely did that, my understanding. I appreciate your diligence and that, so thank you. Thank you. Anyone else, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four? Going three times, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four? Very good, hearing no one. We'll try hearing. Have another minute or so, and we will fire off. This is regular meeting number one for the year two thousand twenty-four, order, and ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the level of the first justice, one nation, America, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
There are no objections or corrections to the amendments of the special legislature meeting number four, on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, on the third of December. And the draft minutes from December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three will be announced shortly and through next month. We've got a motion and a second to dispense with the committee reports.
Word, men.
Word, men, word, thank you. You have a copy of your meeting correspondence in your packet, and with that, we can move right into the votes.
Resolution number five dash twenty-four, one reservation of pay claims, offered by legislative Martinis, second by legislative Hoover.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number six dash twenty-four, one reservation of pay claims, I would, offered by legislative Lewis, second by legislative Hoover.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number seven dash twenty-four, resolution urgent action by New York State legislators to advocate on behalf of Comer Green Community College to increase funding, offered by legislative Rivera, second by legislative Thornton.
Second. Second. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution number eight dash twenty-four, resolution in opposition to New York State Senate Bill S seventy-seven nine four and New York State Assembly Bill A eight three three six and Act One, the Public Authorities Law and Chapter one fifty-four of the laws of nineteen twenty-one, relating to the court authority of New York and New Jersey in relation to contracts to provide services that authority-owned and operated transportation facilities and rest areas.
Chairman, there were cues from it.
Also by legislator Davis, second by legislator Hoover.
A refusal from President Lenin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. That's very important.
Resolution number nine dash twenty-four, secret declaration and approval recommendations for including land into agricultural district number one twenty-four, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Hoover.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number ten dash twenty-four, a linen resolution number seventy-nine dash eleven, adoption of Green County Emergency Plan, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Martinis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number eleven dash twenty-four, adoption and assessment process, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twelve dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement to create council on New York, offered by legislator Lewis, second by legislator Rivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty-four, authorizing Green County cultural funds contract, offered by legislator Thornton, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number fourteen dash twenty-four, authorizing participation in round four of the state statistic system repair program, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-four, authorizing agreements with New York State Department of Transportation and the Arkman Hudson, Section fifty-three eleven, operating and capital assistance for sponsors with continuing agreements and third-party operating, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lang.
Second. Senator Lennon? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-four, authorizing vehicle purchases in Green County Transit, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-four, establishing roster of nine-one-one communications support companies, offered by legislator Blumer, second by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-four, establishing roster of emergency planning consultants, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Blumer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number nineteen dash twenty-four, authorizing disability awareness training agreement in emergency services, offered by legislator Thornton, second by legislator Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty dash twenty-four, authorizing municipalities anticipate and county highway purchases, offered by legislator Martinez, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing change order necessary for the completion of the construction inspection services for replacement of Boomer Road Bridge over Gooseberry Creek, pin three dash two zero zero nine six dash zero, town of Hunter, pin one seven six one point two five, offered by legislator Lang, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four, authorizing change orders number one through eight necessary for the completion of the replacement of the Boomer Road Bridge over Gooseberry Creek, pin three dash two zero zero nine six dash zero, town of Hunter, pin one seven six one point two five, offered by legislator Martinez, second by legislator Lang.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing change order number one and two necessary for the completion of the replacement of Central Lake Road Bridge over Broad Street, Howard Street, town of Lexington, pin one seven six one point two one, offered by legislator Lang, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing change order number one necessary for the completion of the replacement of the County Route eighty-three covert and pedestrian bridge, town of Hunter, pin one seven six zero point two three, offered by legislator Lang, second by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-four, authorizing mid-stage health services, advanced enterprise, replacement of County Route two covert over an unnamed tributary to the scary street, town of Lexington, offered by legislator Lang, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty-six dash twenty-four, authorizing lease agreement, Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and town of Carroll, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Lang and True.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement between Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and Nicole Gaiman, MSRD, CDED, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Blumer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and home aid service of Eastern New York's DPA, Trinity Council, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Blumer.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and Care Foods LLC, DPA Moms Meals, offered by legislator True, second by legislator Overblock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number thirty dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and senior projects of Rubina, offered by chairman Linger, second by legislator Overblock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Department of Human Services, agent, and unique training solutions, offered by chairman Linger, second by legislator Blumer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-four, authorization purchase vehicles in running human services for transit, offered by legislator Davis, second by chairman Linger.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-four, awarding bid, meat, canned goods, frozen supplies, and heavy goods bids to Ginsburgs, offered by legislator Overblock, second by legislator Chip.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Mental Health, Human Services Boards, and the Mental Health Association of Comer Green County's Inc., and budget mapping, offered by legislator Davis, second by legislator Hobart.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Family Planning and Cancer Services Program, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution thirty-six dash twenty-four, moving individual provider contracts, free school, special education program, offered by legislator Davis, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry.
Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-four, moving related service provider contract, free school, special education program, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Blumer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement, Green County Public Park and Maria College, offered by legislator Davis, second by legislator Lennon.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-four, September minutes, medical professional advisory committee utilization review committee, April, May, and June, Order Two for twenty twenty-three, offered by legislator Hoover, second by legislator Davis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number forty dash twenty-four, authorizing conference attendants, Chris Cool, emergency preparedness coordinator, Green County Public Health Department, offered by legislator Blumer, second by legislator Davis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing interstate travel of Green County Emergency Services, Neil Kalender, nine-one-one assistance coordinator, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Martinez.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-four, appointed member of the Community Services Board, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Davis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number forty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing obtaining and furnishing of assessment role-related services and materials, offered by legislator Martinez, second by legislator Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing obtaining and furnishing of election-related services and materials, offered by legislator Lennon, second by legislator Rivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Eric.
Resolution number forty-five dash twenty-four, authorization to take twenty twenty-four annual village elections, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lang.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's carried.
Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-four, resolution accepting bid for sale of in-run property, offered by legislator Martinez, second by legislator Davis.
In a roll call.
Legislator Blumer?
Yes.
Legislator Lewis?
Aye.
Legislator Davis?
Aye.
Let's just... Legislator Hobart?
Yes.
Legislator Lang?
Aye.
Legislator Lemon?
Jeff.
Legislator Lewis?
Aye.
Legislator Rivera?
Yes.
Legislator Martinez?
Yes.
Legislator Overblock?
Yes.
Legislator Thornton?
Yes.
Legislator True?
Yes.
Chairman Linger?
Aye.
So, chairman, we have nine thousand four fifteen ayes, we have five hundred eighty-five absent.
That's carried.
Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-four, amendment capo project number one twenty-seven opioid supplement, offered by legislator Hoover, second by legislator Davis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-four, budget amendment, Green County clerk, digitization of records, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lewis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry.
Resolution number forty-nine dash twenty-four, budget amendment, Green County Board of Elections, absentee ballot free payment process, offered by legislator Hobart, second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number fifty dash twenty-four, budget amendment, Green County Board of Elections, Technology Innovation and Election Resource Grants Program, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lewis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-four, budget amendment, Green County Human Services Unmet Needs Grant, offered by legislator Lang, second by chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric.
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-four, twenty twenty-three budget amendment, Hudson Valley National Center for Veteran Reinformation, Inc., contract, New York State Office of Mental Health, offered by legislator Hobart, second by legislator Blumer. offered by legislator Hobart, second by legislators Boomer, Davis, Lennon, Lucas, Rivera, True, and chairman Linger.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-four, correct and assess role, town of Carroll, Lavino, Duncan, and Seymour Johnson, oxygen, tax map ID number eighty-four point zero zero dash three dash one five, offered by legislator Lake, second by legislator Lennon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-four, correct and assess role, town of Kupsocki, Tanya M. Paul, tax map ID number sixty-nine point zero zero dash four dash one five, offered by legislator Martinez, second by legislator Hobart.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-four, correct and assess role, town of Durham, Mitchie Sue Frangin, tax map ID number twenty-one point zero zero dash five dash three point one one, offered by legislator Rivera, second by legislator Lake.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eric. I have a couple of appointments to do. Reappointing members to the advisory council to the Green County Department for Aging for two thousand twenty-four. Being duly authorized as chairman of the Green County Legislature, I can hereby reappoint. Recommendation of Stephanie Choyer, executive director of Green County Department of Human Services Aging, following as members of the advisory council to the Green County Department for Aging for two thousand twenty-four. Richard Golden, Lynn Bennett, Warren Zollie, Ernest Armstead, Lynn Brunner, Beverly Myers, Jeffrey Russo, Judith Will Pressley, Willa Anderson, Dorothy True, Charlie Mayby, Lily and Moore, Molly Whitbeck, Dylan Pollan, Kathy Scanlon, Cam Craig, vacancies from public health, Ted Boomer, Michelle Dio, today. The second appointment after tonight is appointing, reappointing members to the Green County Youth Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-four. Being duly authorized as chairman of the Green County Legislature, I can hereby reappoint on the recommendation of Stephanie Choyer, executive director of the Green County Department of Human Services Youth Bureau, following as members of the Green County Youth Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-four. The new appointment of Tatum Lampen, student from Greenville. Reappointments are Pam Colton, Kevin Forbes, Gabriel Holwin, Andrew Holiday, Mary Jo Yeager, Amanda Cartridge, Amber Kingman, Nate Lampen, Sal Maza, Brennan Rustic, Angelo Scotoro, John and Mary Ann Spalarri. We have all vacancies from public health. What else have any other business to come before the board tonight? Jeff, let's mention one memorial adjournment?
Yes, please. Richard E. Diddy, seventy-two, passed away suddenly on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, twenty-three. Richard was born in Rockville Center on July seventh, nineteen fifty-one. His family moved from Hicksville to the Greenville area when Richard was age four. He was a student of the Greenville Central School and graduated in nineteen sixty-nine. He then went to Mohawk Valley Community College and earned an associate's degree in mechanical engineering. Richard worked locally at Bryant Supermarket in Greenville, Haney Reels in Westerlow, and as a butcher at Price Joffer. Most people knew Richard as the owner and operator of Rich's Custom Meat Shop. Richard is survived by his wife, children, stepchildren, grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Richard was a man of strong faith and was a member of Ashbury United Methodist Church at Norton Hill. He was a kind man with a big heart, helping people in any way that he could. I myself did not know Mr. Diddy, but many of my friends and clients used him as a butcher and have nothing but nice things to say to him, to say about him. I would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting in honor of the memory of Richard Diddy.
Second from the rest of the board on this. Thank you. Any other memorial adjournments? I'll remind everyone we have a workshop on the twenty-fourth at six o'clock. If anybody has any checks for the Wince Cooper grants this Friday after.